Good evening and welcome to the February 8th, 2024 meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky.
Here.
Rothman.
Here.
De Placido.
Here.
Laney Martin. Brown.
Here.
Weingrad.
Here.
Henry. Depone.
Here.
Figelman.
Here.
Ball. Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Vice President Vehe.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Please note that Commissioner Henry will be joining us shortly. She's, no, Lori Henry will be joining us shortly. And Commissioner Ball was attempting to join remotely. I'm not sure that has been successful, but we will monitor that. I do not have any announcements this evening. So actually, we need to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's do that first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As I said, I do not have any announcements this evening. So now we will move forward with public comment on matters that are before the board on this agenda this evening. If you wish to speak to any agenda items and you're here in the room, please come forward and state your name.
More safety, okay, more safety ordinances for traffic safety are on the agenda. I've been doing a lot of research and the streets here are not safe. They're getting worse.
Do you have a comment specifically about the items that are included in that agenda item?
Yes, this is very important. I would like to at least recognize that there was a gentleman in his 90s who was hit by a car on Easton Road attempting to cross, and he's hospitalized. This is becoming more frequent. And it's something that should be talked about weekly here, these types of accidents. No matter what kind of traffic coming you're going to do, it's not going to help when you keep adding more population to apartments and then you want to put in biking.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I would like to say. And I want to see if there's anything else. Would it be nice if you recognized the gentleman?
Is there anyone else present in the room that wishes to speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Joe Rooney, I live in Ardsley. A couple issues. I saw the collection of local service tax was on the agenda, and I don't feel like we got an actual good explanation of it last time. And the one question I would like to have had addressed was, what are the consequences of this decision on the people who work in the tax office? That wasn't talked about at all. And the second one, the police lieutenant's agreement. I tried to look through the agenda packet. I didn't really understand that. I was able to look up what drop was, but it still didn't make sense to me. I don't know if that can be explained before you vote on it. And I'm sorry to see Ms. Carswell resign because she's a good supporter of fracking, and I wish her well in the future. And the last was the sewer interceptor project. We just got our tax bills in, and I was just wondering, because I don't understand that, whether that has an effect on our sewer charge on the tax bill. And I have one more. Oh, heck. Do I still have time? Okay. I'm sorry about that. I have another piece. There it is. So along with that, everybody just got their taxes in. I just got my bill today, I believe, and I want to just go over a couple things. I met with Mr. Manfred a year ago. When it says the township millage rate, there's actually three or four other items that are in that. I was hoping that could be explained.
So, Mr. Rooney, is that, that's not on the agenda this evening? I mean, if you want to have a general comment period about.
You're going to interrupt me in my last minute?
I'm pointing out to you that what you're doing now is you're not talking about things that we're voting this evening on.
Well, it's distress, the, the financial thing is in the agenda. The treasures.
If you have a question about the monthly expenditures.
So you're going to interrupt me while I just talk about everybody's tax bill?
I'm going to redirect you to say that if you have general public comment, you can make that at the end of the meeting. This comment period is for items that we are voting on this evening.
That's unreasonable. I'm sorry to see that.
Well, that's your opinion. Are there others in the room that wish to come forward about matters that are on the agenda this evening?
Good evening. My name's Steve Miller. I live in Glenside, 131 Edgerton Avenue. I'm here specifically to talk about a new business item on the motion to award the inclusive park and playground bid. So I'm, I'm a member of a parents group, has been working with the township since 2019 to get this done. And I just, I wanted to speak in support of this motion just to make sure that it's understood that we parents want to see this move forward with this motion as it's written. It's been such a long time. I'm here with my son and just want to make sure that, that this gets constructed as soon as possible to fill that need of the, the members of our community who are disabled and both children and adults can enjoy this space. So, all right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out to express your support. Are there others in the room that wish to speak?
Hello. My name is Erin Glasser. I'm actually following up on what the last gentleman was talking about. I, I want to, just thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I stand here before you as both a resident and a mother, a mother of, a mother who, like many others, dream of a world where her child can thrive without barriers or limitations. My children, Ivy and Otto, are amazing. They're funny and thoughtful and love to play. My daughter was born with a physical disability, and so a lot of the world still remains inaccessible to her and people like her. There are so many barriers to her just being a kid. And so I am coming here in support of the playground. I can understand that approving construction of an inclusive playground is not just about the building or the structure, but about building our community, a community where our children can learn the value of empathy and inclusion at a young age and where parents like me can breathe a sigh of relief knowing that our children have a place where they're valued and welcome. I'm sure that there's a lot to decide balancing budgets and priorities, but I urge you to see beyond the numbers and see the faces of children like my daughter who deserve nothing less than the chance to play and laugh and be kids. So I ask you to approve the construction of an inclusive playground and together, let's take a step towards a brighter, more inclusive future for our community and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? And if not, we'll turn to those who are on Zoom.
This is Laura Layman. I have a couple of things. First of all, the chief's documents were missing in terms of you're approving his, the terms of employment, et cetera, and those documents were not there. And, Mr. Hecker, I asked you specifically, and, and even just for the courtesy, to reply that you got my email and my request and couldn't even get an answer on that from you. That, that, that is a township that is gone awry. You're supposed to be there for the residents. The fact that all of the salaries and positions were removed from the budget this year is indicative of this not being a mistake. This violation of our policy to provide the documents appears to have been purposeful, along with the purposeful removal of the employee positions and salaries from the budget. Please fix that. Mr. Hecker, your job is not to make laws and, and even violate laws in order to make transparency worse. Your job is to make transparency better for the residents of this township so that our government works better. The inclusive playground is a wonderful thing. $2 million right off the bat does seem like a heck of a big start. It seems like it might have been better to, I know there are people that have been working on this for a long time, but to build parts of it and then see which parts are working and not working. But still, I'm glad that it is at least underway. We have, actually, we have $11 million. So there's nine more million dollars going to the parks that we have no clue what you have in mind. And if there's a place that we can go to see what you have in mind for that $11 million, we'd like to see it because we have some things in mind, too. And when you did your park study, you literally kissed every single baby you could kiss and literally put everything in the parks that you could possibly put in. The Gallman property that is about to get a medical office building on it was done without any proper notification again. The residents, despite Mr. Depone's false claims that Mr. Weingrad had actually notified everybody, they were not notified of the meeting that they were able to come to but had not been able to come to because they didn't know it was happening. And so that kind of stuff just needs to stop. Everybody praised Mr. Weingrad up and down.
All right, Ms. Layman, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
Let me finish the comment, please, okay? Let me just finish it. Thank you. And, and what we need to do is we need to make sure the notifications get out for all of these things and that people's rights to speak are protected. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I believe there was one other hand up.
Hi, this is Brad Turner, 2070 Jenkett Town Road, Ward 12.
Good evening.
To show our support for the inclusive playground, I'm glad to see that it is on the docket for tonight and that it'll finally be voted on. And our children with special needs, wheelchair dependent, will have a place to play just like the rest of the children in Abington Township. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Oh, yeah. Come on forward.
Just one point of clarification about the funds. A lot of the funds are coming from ARPA and are other types of grants that the township is applying for. And actually, some, the ARPA, they already have received. So it's not like it's coming out of Abington taxes necessarily. It's coming from like federal funds and I don't know if it's state grants, but other, other things like that. So just to alleviate maybe some of those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will now turn to the consent agenda, and I will turn things over to Board Vice President Matt Vehe.
Thank you, Mr. President. We move for passage of the consent agenda. Listened as items A through F. Nice to move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. We have no unfinished business, so we'll turn to new business. And I once again turn things over to Board Vice President Matt Vehe.
The first item of new business is BOC-06020824, motion to accept Ward 10 Commissioner Jessica Carswell's resignation from the Board of Commissioners effective February 16th, 2024. Nice to move.
Second.
Reluctantly.
I feel like I'm voting my friends off the board.
Yeah. Just note that we will have an opportunity at a future meeting to honor Commissioner Carswell for her service to the township. We couldn't make it work this month. Her work schedule is now expanded into the evening, but we will find an opportunity to do so. And we will be accepting applications to appoint a new commissioner, and the intent is that we will make the appointment at the March Board meeting. So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I want to oppose this. Doesn't matter. Motion carries.
Next item is BOC-07020824, motion to award Abington Inclusive Park Playground Bid to MECO Construction in the amount of $1,951,491 and appropriate $416,104 from the American Rescue Plan Act capital item, ARPA cultural, sorry, ARPA Culture Recreation and Parks Infrastructure Investments. Nice to move.
Second.
Note that there were multiple seconds. Are there any comments from members of the board?
President Hecker. I've had the opportunity to sit in on several of the meetings with the parents who have really spearheaded this, this, this initiative. And it's really inspiring to see their drive and how they come to bat for their children. This inclusive park is not simply a benefit for them. It's a benefit for the entire township and the entire area. So I want everyone who's in attendance, both in person and listening online, to understand that this will benefit everyone in the township. There are so many lessons to be learned by letting these kids who have been prohibited from playing just to play and to be kids. So this initiative is so very important, and it has my full, full-throated support.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Henry.
Although we will be celebrating Commissioner Carswell at a later date, I think this is a very fitting way to, to honor her, her service that this is what we're looking at tonight. She's put a lot into this, and this is really going to be a huge, huge boon for the whole community, of course, but her ward in particular. So that's kind of exciting. I like that juxtaposition. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Henry. Commissioner Rothman.
Sometimes it's, it's more special than others to be up here and voting in support of something like this makes it, it's humbling. And it's been a long time coming. Maybe should have been done in the past. And now hopefully we'll, we'll have something wonderful and be able to expand upon it. So I'm enthusiastic about supporting this initiative.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. Any other commissioners wish to comment? Well, before we take a vote, I also want to just extend my gratitude to the families that have put all of their time and energy into this. I know it's not easy to come forward and share personal details of the struggles that you experienced, but here we'll have the opportunity to celebrate this. And as Commissioner Brown pointed out, this makes the community a better place. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The park has been approved.
Next item of new business is BOC-08020824, motion to refer the Gallman Request Draft Zoning Map Amendment Ordinance to the Township Planning Commission and Montgomery County Planning Commission for review and comment. Nice to move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Weingrad.
Thank you. I would welcome the, what, what the county planning has to say and what our planning commission has to say, and I would support this moving forward for their review.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. Any other comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is BOC-09020824, motion to approve the preliminary final major land development plan for LD-2304, 640 Cedar Road, Hopewell Vet, and adopt Resolution Number 24-012. Nice to move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item of new business is BOC-10020824, motion to approve LD-2305, 1216 and 1236 Washington Lane, and adopt Resolution Number 24-013. Nice to move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item of new business is BOC-11020824, motion to approve the baseball field agreement between Abington Township facilities and, sorry, between Abington Township and Manor College. Nice to move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
The last item of new business is BOC-12020824, motion to approve settlement agreement with Cheltenham Township for the cost sharing related to the sanitary sewer interceptor A project and authorize staff and the solicitor to take all necessary steps in accordance with the agreement. Nice to move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
That concludes the new business. Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Vehe. We'll now turn to the Finance Committee, and I will turn to Finance Committee Chair, Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. The only item up is FC-01020824, motion to approve the December 2023 expenditures in the amount of $3,967,109.97 and salaries and wages in the amount of $3,671,999.25 and authorizing the proper officials to sign and approve invoices and supporting documentation and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of March 2024. Nice to move.
It has been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Brodsky.
Yes.
Rothman.
Yes.
De Placido.
Yes.
Laney Martin.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Weingrad.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Depone.
Yes.
Figelman.
Yes.
Ball.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Vice President Vehe.
Yes.
President Hecker.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
And that would conclude the finance agenda items for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. We will now open it up for public comment on general matters of township business. Please come forward. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Adele Cubell, 1848, Amblerou. In 2023, there were 402 car collisions on the fairway and the Abington section of Old Jork Road, 402, on little more than three miles of street. This is a staggering number. This is an increase of 57 collisions in the span of just a year. Why, Commissioners, do you show no concern for the rapidly rising number of collisions? These collisions are in the area that you have designated the family bike path. Its official designation on a, on a dangerous area of street is reprehensible. This area is saturated with cars and pedestrians. The large rise in car collisions proves it. Building more large-scale apartments in this area would put more people in jeopardy. The Noble Train Station Playground is meant to save developers the cost of building a proper playground. The location, though, next to a train station and the heaviest traffic in the township, could not be worse. You're putting children at risk. There will be lives lost because of this. Abington is 100% developed and is now crumbling. Mr. Manfredi is doing a disservice to citizens. Essential maintenance has been cut to court developers and actually pay for the expenses rich developers need. Why, Commissioners, is Mr. Manfredi's position centered on hiring corporate consultants and catering to developers? Petitions were signed by over 1,200 citizens. All wanted maintenance to be prioritized. 500 citizens wanted a stop put on all apartment development. These petitions were never responded to by Mr. Manfredi or Commissioners. Tonight, I have a new petition, the fourth one. This one is asking for replacement of two township benches by a bus stop. These benches are in deplorable condition. They need to be replaced. I've been asking for this for three years. You cannot welcome people into a township when we do not even have decent benches for those that work hard every single day and wait for the bus to and from work. Not everyone has a posh office that they sit in like Mr. Manfredi that costs thousands. I should not have to petition for benches. This is a collapsed building on Easton Road. I don't know why it's collapsed. I don't know why. Nobody is dealing with it. We're getting more and more collapsed buildings. I am not talking about litter. When I talk about blight, I'm talking about dangerous blight. I'm talking about dangerous. This place here rents for over $2,000. It has a broken down mattress that's been put in through a fire. Somebody lit it, a fire. These apartments are outrageously priced. People can't afford them, and it puts police in the position where they have to go and notify people that they have to leave an apartment that isn't even worth that much.
Ms. Cubell, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments. Your time has expired.
I would like to present this petition for just two, brand new, and we could actually use a third one, Fonnet Lane, benches.
You can give it to the township staff. Just leave it on the table there. We'll take care of it. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Who's going to fix it?
Ms. Cubell, your time has expired. Please take your seat.
The building has collapsed since it's on the street that way.
Thank you for your comments.
It's not a comment, it's a fact.
Anyone else in the room wish to come forward? Please do so.
Hi, I'm Joe Rooney, and I live in Ardsley. I'd like to take a minute right now. I'm going to call on the Ward Four Commissioner to resign, and I'd like to explain why. I found out over the last month that this commissioner, who also was an employee of the county, was using township resources and official header to actually fundraise for his own personal campaign. So what I did is I pointed that out to Mr. Hecker. I pointed that out to Mr. Manfredi. I went to the clerk of the court also, and then I also approached the solicitor for the county. Now, this is bad enough, but we're used to seeing abuse of power in Abington Township. But what happened after this is crazy. So the clerk of the court, excuse me, I'm sorry. The solicitor for the county didn't do anything about this except send my concerns to the Ward Four Commissioner. And the next step is what really is troubling, I think, needs to be addressed. The man, something got triggered, and he's mad at me, but he used technology people to try and track down my email to find another private citizen in Ward Four. Then he went to his house at 7:00 in the morning and waited for him to come out of work and, excuse me, come out of his house to go to work, and he confronted him in an angry and confrontational manner. And that's really bad, but this private citizen actually felt so upset that he was worried that something more, he felt threatened about that. And I have to tell you this. First off, I found this because it's posted on Facebook. It's posted on social media, and there's more than one incidence of it. If a person, if one of you all have a problem, come to my house. Don't try and track somebody down in your own ward. The second part of that is, if you're a commissioner and you're that upset and you're going to go and confront a private citizen, one of your constituents in your ward, there's something wrong. If you have a problem with somebody, call them up, set up an appointment, If you have a problem with somebody, call them up, set up an appointment, write them a letter. When you confront somebody at their house, I'm telling you, there's something wrong, and I believe you need to resign and seek professional help. And I think that's the crux of the thing right there. And that's what I want to point out to you all and make sure you understand it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? And if not, we'll turn to Zoom.
I don't see. Can you hear me? I'm not there.
We can hear you. Can you please reset the clock to three minutes?
You can hear me. Okay. That's my icon's usually on the screen. I don't see it. Okay, so you passed the baseball fields, but not one single person talked about, neither did the document, talk about who's going to pay for that field and what participation level they have to pay for the Albathorpe and the Roslin Field. They are using it even for people from out of town, and I have no problem with them using it if it doesn't cut out use so that ordinary citizens are going to end up with no use. But I have no problem with them using it, but they, they should participate in paying for it. So I hope that will be addressed. Mr. Hecker, am I going to get the chief's terms and conditions of employment that were passed tonight with no documents available for the public?
Mr. Manfredi, do you wish to address that?
Please stop my voice when he does, okay? Thank you. Are you speaking? Because I don't hear anybody.
Mr. Manfredi was speaking, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Laban is familiar with our process to get documents, and we will certainly provide that.
Okay, so they should have been provided for all of the public. The drop program, I hope you will respond. There's two ways that can go. One, the pension that would have been withdrawn to add to their pension account can be given to a trust fund that they will get immediately on retirement, or they can be paid a pension payment while also working. So I hope that, I won't have you stop it again, but I hope at the end of my speaking you will answer that. Mr. Rooney also asked that question. I want to give congratulations to the parents who worked so hard for that playground. It will be a wonderful thing. In terms of the, the money concern, it was a concern that we did have a playground once, that when it was all finished, everybody said, oh, this doesn't work at all. This should have been like this, and this should have been this way. And that's why I made the comment that I think it would have been better to have parts of it done and see how you wanted the rest of it. But grants and the ARPA funds also came from our pockets. As much as we would love to think that they come from heaven or shake-off trees, they come right from our pockets, and they go through so many agencies that they're actually worse than having it come from the township. And I want to add that I am very, very concerned that the solicitor's office, when they were at the hearing for 100 York, did not ask strongly for the judge to punish somebody who came so often and drug our personnel and are dragging our residents through that mire. And I did hear that they were scraping off the mold from the walls, and I understand the mold tests have not been done. And certain kinds of molds, if you scrape them and put the mold spores into the air, can be deadly. They can be extremely dangerous and even deadly.
Ms. Laban, I'll ask you to conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
I, I am concluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there is no other further public comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.